We have roll call please.
Iverston.
Here.
Shot singer.
Here.
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 I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have anyone here to give the indication today, so we'll just have a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Come here. With the updated agenda, with the appointment of the last. I'll move.
Second.
Been moved by Jonathan, seconded by John. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's approved. I don't see anyone here for a comment this evening. Going right to our first agenda item, is a state municipal agreement for carbon reduction program project.
So you're back into your head, kind of just the front couple pages of a state municipal grant agreement for carbon reduction program grant totaling. Oh, let's see here, the grant total is about $36,191 with a $9,048 match. This application to the state went in over a year ago. So we've been waiting on notification of it, so we received that a month ago or so. So we clarified a few things with the state of Wisconsin regarding our application. Because some things had changed, they originally had asked that a number of the lights on connecting highways, so the state highways be excluded. So we did that, they then funded that request partially. So there's approximately 67 or so streetlights that we're looking at retrofitting. It'll be at essentially an 80/20 split with the city. This would be a 2024 project. So there are areas of town that have streetlights in it that are owned by the city. A few neighborhoods in downtown, as well as then the ones on state highways that remain. I don't even know what they currently are, but they're not LED. So we would work at replacing all of them with this grant at 80/20 split.
And we'd be seeking a motion tonight to accept the award.
I'll make a motion to accept the award for the carbon reduction program grant to retrofit approximately 67 streetlights to LED at a cost of about $45,239 project.
I will second.
Then moved by Doug, seconded by David. Any discussion?
Yep. Doug. So these are our streetlights, not Alliance?
Correct.
Okay, so how much electrical savings are we looking at here?
I'd have to really look at it, Doug, go back to the application, I don't have it in front of me. We did this about a year ago, I think the anticipated payback on the overall project was like 12 years, but our portion was only like a fraction of that, obviously 20% of that. So a few year payback on it all in terms of savings. We had applied originally for two grants, one for an electric street sweeper. We thought that was actually a better grant. And they decided to change the rules and say, we're not giving any money for vehicles. And essentially reopened everything. And the streetlight retrofitting became a huge, a huge project. They funded it throughout the state of Wisconsin. So the payback on it is, I believe, I think we calculated it out to be something like six years. Maybe a little bit less or more, depending on what we all do here and what the overall project costs. Because we are again using numbers from a year ago and we're doing the project two years from application. So we'll basically go as far as we can with the grant dollars and determine then, you know, what the payback is over time, but I think six, seven years.
Okay, well, thank you.
And I believe the reduction in wattage is about half of what the current lights use for LED.
Okay, well, that's what I was thinking.
It's 150 down to 60.
So closer to a third.
Pretty good. And if we wait a little bit, it may even be more.
So Terry, then Howard.
So we're approximately replacing 67. I mean, how many are we talking that the city needs to replace overall?
The 67 was the inventory we had counted in total. So, you know, whether, some have burnt out, we've replaced since then. So again, this is the, we're doing a project from an application from a year ago, two years after, you know. So it's going to be around that number. The majority of the streetlights that we're looking at are on the state highways. The city owns and is responsible for out on West Fond du Lac, I believe, that whole stretch of streetlights. And then Douglas, there's a whole stretch that we are responsible for. And then the pockets, there are a few areas in town that there are streetlights put up that are not your normal Cobra, Alliance, Energy light that the city put in neighborhoods, including up in like the Kensington area up there and that development. And by like Harvey and a couple of those spaces and then downtown. So we'd be looking at all of those areas, addressing each one. A component of this too is working with the contractor to obtain focus on energy. So this could come in far less than that. This was just, again, you know, predicting in the future, getting a maximum of 67 done. And that would get us, you know, pretty much close to getting it all hammered out to LED in our lights, so.
Can I ask one other part of it? The other part was, would this be able to be used towards future development project or no?
No, this is, this grant is for just these, just what we have.
Okay.
Howard. Adam, are any of these in good enough shape where they could be resold? And recruit some of our 20% that we're putting back into this project?
I think all of the lighting at that point is, you know, it's likely at end of life or irrelevant for future use. I mean, somebody certainly, we could look at it, that might be in the price for the contractor, you know, but likely it's going to be a cost of disposal. You know, any other time, what we would do is we would replace light when it burns out. This is being more proactive and doing it all at once. So we'll spec out the light and go through that process with the contractor, you know, whoever gets the bid, to determine if we could reuse it, maybe. But generally speaking, we would move to LED and then hopefully these last for many, many, many years versus, you know, just a few.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the state municipal agreement for carbon reduction program project, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Next item is a change order for the state street reconstruction project. This was the request for the different fence, which should now be a handrail. Total for the change order would be $12,959.10.
John.
Did they back out the original cost of the fence that was in the contract?
No, they have not done that yet, that will flush out at the end of everything. You can assume about a $4,500 reduction of the existing chain link fence. So net, you're looking at around $8,000 in a change at this point, which, you know, the reason we're not backing it out at this point is we don't know if there's going to be another need to do a change order. And at the very end of every project, when the dust settles, we have a final sort of change order or reconciliation in the project, so it will be reflected in that cost at that point. But this is just the, in addition to that, the reduction of it will come off at the end. We just don't want to do that prematurely because we may need a pile of rocks that costs, you know, five grand or something, so. But that's the overall impact, generally speaking, one for the other is around $8,000.
Terry.
Do we have to use the fence that's kind of where it's got the spindles in there? Or can we have something more open, you know, kind of like, lack of a better term, something similar to that?
No, due to building code, you can't have a gap more than four, four and a half inches.
Okay.
But would have to be spindle, could be horizontal, but mostly you see them as vertical.
Yeah, when we looked at trying to do something that provided adequate security and safety, anything more vertical versus horizontal would leave a lot to be desired in terms of safety and what we're trying to accomplish. At that point in time, you're almost better off not having anything. Because a dog, a kid, or anything could just sort of fall through.
Questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion to accept the change order.
I'll second.
Then moved by John, seconded by Doug. Any discussion on the change order? David.
By two cents worth then. The other one's just like a chain link fence, right?
Yes.
So we're spending over $8,000 for what? I mean, it's, I don't see where it looks that much better in 8,000 to 8,000. I mean, there's a tree line on one side of it, so you can't even see it from hardly anywhere unless you're on the road and then it's an empty field that you'll be looking at.
We'll say the additional cost is from the fabrication, it is a custom made handrail.
Right, yeah. I understand, it's a nice, you know, as far as the fence being nice or whatever, spending that 8,500 for it, I'm not denying it's not an 8,500 fence. I'm just saying, why are we spending it and putting it there? It just seems like a lot of money to spend for a little bit of aesthetic value.
Go ahead, John.
Well, in my opinion, aesthetically, it's a lot better looking. And it is like the entrance to the city's cemetery. And unfortunately, we have to have a railing. I mean, it would be nice if we didn't have to have one, but if we're going to try to make it look nice for the cemetery and everybody that uses it, I think this is a better alternative than a chain link fence.
Court.
I agree with John, we're spending all this money on this new project for the road, the bridge and all that. It'd really make it look trashy just throwing up a chain link fence. So here, you know, for the $8,500, a little aesthetic value goes a long way, in my opinion.
As someone who walks their dogs that way a lot, they're little dogs. And I do walk the cemetery because I have family members there. I think that incurring an additional $8,000 in a change order at the beginning of a project in which we don't know what we're going to find, if we're going to start burying cable and doing other things of that nature. So I'm actually opposed to this because I don't think it's a good investment for the project.
And I will just say to your point about the aesthetics. This is a handrail or fence that will be there for 25, 50 years. I would tend to agree with Howard in wanting it to look nice for those 25, 50 years.
I think if it were in a higher profile area, I would agree. And I just don't believe the, the chain link fence is not going to look bad, it's just not going to look as nice. I can just think of other places to spend $8,000.
All right, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Adam, roll call please.
Iverston.
No.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gallops.
No.
Gunnert.
Yes.
Kotsky.
Yes.
Sorensen.
No.
Split.
Yes.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you. All right, moving on to occupancy permit and agreement with Alliance Laundry. Am I missing something in my packet? Or is this what you have there?
I don't know if you're missing something, are you missing?
Or something's out of order here. Yeah, it's out of order.
Yep, out of order, I apologize. So basically, let me see if I can. Hold it. There we go. So the plan commission met earlier this month and approved a site plan for the sort of reconstruction of this parking lot here on Alliance Laundry's property on Shepherd Street. If I zoom in here, you can kind of see that this issue, if you didn't drive by it or you're not on plan commission or you didn't listen to the meeting. This area here is basically a uncurbed wide parking slash walkway all along the eastern side of Shepherd Street. What happens in this area is cars park parallel and sporadically. So there's no rhyme or reason, they just park, sometimes leaving three, four feet between them. So you're not, you're not having any efficient parking. And oftentimes, there are people that, because the right of way and it kind of looks like a road and acts like a parking area, but it actually serves as a sidewalk. Because as you go to the north a little bit, the sidewalk here along this, along Shepherd does sort of, I apologize, it's a little leg, but it does continue through here and then it keeps going. So there's like a traditional sidewalk, you know, in this area, and then it sort of moves to this kind of mess, okay? So the plan commission approved the reconstruction and redesign, which is kind of a sketch in your packet. And what ends up happening then is they would, Alliance Laundry has requested to essentially turn this parking area here from parallel to angled. It increases overall parking in the area by about 18 stalls, which certainly is helpful. And then it also requires them to maintain a five foot path on private property. Because they will have their angled stalls encroaching, they'll sort of encroach onto Alliance's property. So to push the sidewalk over then onto private property, we worked with LUD and legally brought together this occupancy permit and agreement to allow this all to happen. So this would be kind of the final step in doing this. They're repaving everything, restriping everything, adding parking. And overall, you know, plan commission felt that this was, you know, a good plan and recommended, you know, approval of the agreement as kind of the final piece.
John.
I would just like to add, on the opposite side of that, there is also a sidewalk that, you know, abuts that side of the street, so there's walking on that side also.
Gavin, blue line goes through.
It does, it goes right through the sidewalk, yeah.
Any discussion, motions? David.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit of Alliance Laundry Systems for their.
I'll second that.
Then moved by David, seconded by Doug. Discussion. Terry.
Any restriping in the future, is that going to be on Alliance or will that be on the city?
It'll be on Alliance, that's, they're occupying it and agreeing.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the occupancy permit and agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right, moving on to the City of Ripon Pay Plan and Program. Deb.
In your packets, and I sent this out probably about a week ago or so, there is a draft, what is considered a pay plan and program. So as a part of the employee handbook book revisions, staff have been working on developing a formal pay plan to establish pay ranges as well as controls and whatnot for each major or full-time or permanent part-time position within the city. In addition to that, there is information in the packet and in the plan regarding performance evaluations, cost of living adjustments, wage adjustments for performance and outside of any cost of living and performance adjustments. So this is a bit of a different approach that we've been talking about more recently. And has all applicable positions. And then you can kind of see the concept of putting into work a performance review that would be then determined if eligible for cost of living and pay for performance. So obviously, a little bit different than previously where generally speaking, the common council would annually establish a cost of living increase for everybody. We would still establish that cost of living increase annually during the budget process. I would request that if you approve this tonight and want to establish that cost of living, that would be incredibly helpful for our budgeting process. In addition to that, the new idea of a pay for performance, which is certainly, in addition to a cost of living, if there's a willingness to, you know, add a pay for performance bump to those who are our top performers for the year, to achieve and get an increase above and beyond the cost of living, I would request that that be also discussed and set tonight for purposes of the budget. Overall, the expectation in terms of what this does is it sets a baseline for performance. If you do not meet that, so basically a score of, out of five, a say a two or below, that is not meeting expectations and, or below a two, I should say. That is not meeting expectations and an employee would not be eligible for a cost of living adjustment. The idea of two being, you know, improvement needed or unsatisfactory, fails to meet expectations, that is something we have never really done before. Everybody has just been given a raise irregardless of performance. In addition to that, then, the pay for performance is looked at. And those who are high performers or have showed exemplary work during the year will be eligible for that with certain limits and certain, you know, controls on it so that, you know, it's not that a department head who is an easy grader and gives everybody fives because they don't want to hurt anybody feeling, doesn't automatically get that everybody gets a pay for performance. So that will be heavily managed by the city administrator's office, me, as well as in consultation with each department head. This does not apply to library employees, nor does it apply to individuals in a contract. So those individuals would be police union as well as myself. And the city attorney would also be exempt from this type of arrangement because of the arrangement for the city attorney. So it kind of lays it all out. Certainly happy to answer any questions about this whole entire process and plan.
I have a two-part question. The first part would be, are you suggesting an increase? You're suggesting a possible performance increase for this year. Would that be retroactive to January 1st or July 1st or October 1st or do you?
Everything would be effective January 1st.
Okay.
So, yeah.
The follow-up question is, what is the estimated, there might be a range in budget, what is the estimated cost of retroactive pay for performance pay across the organization? And do we have the funds to accommodate that?
So retroactive meaning to this year?
Yeah.
We wouldn't do anything this year.
Okay, I thought, I heard you say.
I believe we will be evaluating their performance for 2023.
For 2024.
Yes, so it's always sort of a, it's a couple months behind.
So I misheard.
Yep.
I misheard what you were saying.
And in terms of overall impact on the budget, we haven't done the calculation because we haven't established the number that we're going to use.
Okay.
Generally speaking, though, in this year's budget, with the added shared revenue of $360,000, that is primarily for public safety and public works, that will certainly help absorb that. As well as our insurance, health insurance costs for the first time will dramatically shrink from an overall, because we were having a surcharge of quite a bit, I think it was $800. That'll save the city tens of thousands of dollars by getting cut in half.
Okay.
So there's a little bit more flexibility there in the overall budget to absorb a wage increase, unlike previous years where shared revenue was stagnant and those types of things.
Okay, all right. I would like to move that we adopt the City of Ripon Pay Plan and Program effective January 1st, 2024, with the addition of a 2024 cost of living increase. And I think that's it.
I'd second that.
But what percentage?
Well, I can't give you a percent, you have to base it on a cost of living.
I thought we were going to talk about, do this separately.
Yeah, we can do that. So generally speaking, we don't tie, we don't tie the cost of living to a consumer index rating, so.
So you're asking to separate it and do it at another time? Do you want to do it when you do the budget?
Do it tonight, and then we can always certainly change the number if it becomes too costly or there's some sort of issue with.
Well, I'm not prepared to give you a percentage now, okay? So I can just amend that motion to approve the Ripon Pay Plan and Program, and we can talk about COLA during the budget process.
But I'm saying to you that during this time, two-thirds of our budget is generally wages and benefits and those things. And for planning purposes, we need to know a number because that will dictate everything else we are doing. In past years, in around August time, we have set a general increase. We have also tied it directly to the police union. So essentially, every year, we've gone in saying, everybody is getting the same. So the police union is 3%, just a standard.
I will give you a number, not to exceed 3%.
If you'd like to repeat your motion, I never recognize the second. So if you'd like to repeat your motion.
Oh, okay. I moved that we accept the City of Ripon Pay Plan and Program. Oh, okay. I moved that we accept the City of Ripon Pay Plan and Program with a 2024 COLA not to exceed 3%.
I will second that.
All right. That's been moved by Ellen and seconded by Howard. Discussion. Anyone?
Nobody understands.
Did you want us to also address your pay performance percentage as well?
I think we can do that separately if you'd like.
Okay, that's better.
In a separate motion, but we can discuss it after this motion is.
Yeah, you can roll that into discussion, Terry.
Perfect.
John.
Was last year's increase 3%?
Yeah.
I think it was, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I delete.
Yeah.
It's pretty much been 3% for the last several years.
And I'll just say, tying it to the consumer pricing that some communities do that, it is a very, very, it can be very, very detrimental. I mean, just in terms of overall costs.
It would have been like 8.7% this year if you had, if we had done that. Right now, it's trending toward 2.7 for 2024.
Do we want to look at a lower percentage and then a higher one for the pay for performance one? Just a thought. I don't know if that's anything you do or we don't do.
I think, I think generally speaking, we have, you know, most of our employees are not even going to get close to a two. If they are, they're, you know, below a two, you know, they probably aren't with us very long. I would say that, you know, the pay for performance number should be less.
Okay.
Just because keeping things in line, if everybody kind of gets 3%, everybody stays kind of similar. If that number is like, you know, 2% and then 3% for pay for performance, you could start getting pretty wide gaps. So for, for, you know, parity or, you know, being fairness or whatnot, or keeping the pay structures equitable within each category and each grade of employee, employee position, I wouldn't recommend going too crazy in that because then you could have somebody making $5 or $6 more per hour for the same position, although that employee may be worth $5 or $6 more per hour, and, you know, that's the whole concept here. But I would, I would say keep it less.
Okay, thank you.
We've discussed this pay for performance aspect years ago and just kind of got tabled to the side, so I'm glad that this is being brought up at this time to encourage our employees to see what they can do and show us their best performance and be rewarded for it.
So we're doing 3% and then we're talking 2% for the bonus, whatever.
Whatever you.
Whatever, yeah, whatever it is. How do you get that extra percent? Like, you score one to a five, does a four and five get it? And a two and three get something, one get nothing? How was that going to work?
Yeah. So, good question. We did not tie this to a specific number. So if somebody gets a, say, a 4.5, they may not get a pay for performance if somebody scores higher. They may also have other factors that go into it, and that's why it's going to be a conversation and discussing, looking at people's, you know, overall pay to ensure that there's some parity and clarity for people. You know, you have a tendency to have some department heads, and this has been the downfall of pay for performance in a lot of organizations, that one department is the easy, it's the grade inflation. I don't want to be the boss, the bad guy. I'm giving everybody a, you know, if they got to get a four and a half to get a pay for performance, everybody's getting a four and a half.
Yeah.
Okay. So there have to be parameters established, and generally speaking, you know, your top 25% of performers should be getting the pay for performance, generally speaking. Every department is different in terms of how many employees that is and how many people score well, but we will try to limit it to the top performers based on the criteria established and their work for the year, because somebody may go get certified, right? And they may score less, but they now add value to the organization. Well, because they went and got certified, they may be bumped up and got, get the pay for performance because they went above and beyond and have achieved a certification or something that adds value to our organization. So that will be managed out of my office, looking at everything, working with the department head to ensure that there is fairness across the organization to promote pay for performance in a logical way, and making sure that not everybody just gets, you know, the pay for performance bump because they got a five or four and a half or because of grade inflation. It's the same thing that happens in school, right? You know, you used to get Cs, and that was actually pretty good. Now, now everybody gets As, right? And so, so, you know, I, we didn't tie a number to that because of that reason, and in feedback from department heads, you know, they've been in organizations that have done that, and, you know, this department always gets it, you know, because they're too nice, and it's, or they don't want to hurt someone's feelings. At the end of the day, we'll look at everybody, we'll look at their wage, see where they are compared to it, look at their performance, and make adjustments accordingly.
Okay. So it's not a cut and dried, this is what we're doing. It's kind of an inbox type.
Yeah, I mean.
Few groin pains maybe on this?
A few, there very much could be. I mean, but again, the alternative is tying it to something, and then, and then there's, there's, you might as well just budget the full amount for everybody, because no department head's going to make the tough decision. That some, and some will, and then you have departments that are, well, they are always getting it versus, you know, this department, it's harder to get it. So, you know, running it through the administrator's office and just looking at it, you know, that is the goal of it all, to make sure that it's not just.
Okay.
Everybody, you get this and you get this.
The motion on the floor is regarding the position pay plan.
Pay program.
Concept of pay for performance.
It would be included in there with the 3% put in for the cost of living.
And this merit pay.
Yep.
Is not set in stone.
At this point, no.
Okay. That's, I just want to clarify. People have thrown around 2%, 3%. The concept is what you're looking to adopt this evening?
Yeah, and then if, if the council has added a 3% cost of living, that would be plugged.
Across the board, right?
Into the, cost of living if it's achieved by the performance plan.
Okay.
So, so basically, somebody's.
They've got to have an average score.
They got to, they got to score a two or less, you know.
Knocking.
Below a two, they would not be eligible for a cost of living.
Okay.
So if somebody scores a 1.9, that is not acceptable performance.
But if somebody gets a four or a five.
Four or five, they would.
We are not setting this evening that they get $100 or $500.
It's 3%.
3%.
3%, and that's just.
That's the base.
Just the cost of living. Okay, that's it.
That's the base.
Nothing above that.
Above that, we would have to set in a separate motion.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to clarify. And we're throwing around an additional 2% or something, I do know. I understand how you can.
And every year, we would just bring back.
To the council.
That would be the next discussion.
Right.
But it's, because it's part of the policy, right, how we handle it.
Got it. Just wanted to clarify.
So tonight, are you just looking for, you know, do we need rough numbers, a three and a two, and, because we can always change it, right?
We have a 3% put in.
Yeah, but I mean, do we want to put the 2% in for the performance raise and just?
That will be the next discussion.
Separate motion.
But then we could, and then we could just, but after we do, we can change it during.
Yeah, if for some reason, if some reason we've gone, it's overspent, right?
Right.
You know, if there becomes a time where we're looking at the budget, forecasting it out and saying, oh, no, we're, this is ugly, right?
Right.
You know, there may be years that there's either recommendation or vote to not have a pay for performance bump and just a cost of living, or whatever it may be. So, so we'll do it annually.
Okay, all right.
As part of the budget process.
Any further discussion? The current motion is to adopt the City of Ripon Pay Plan and Program, including a 2024 COLA increase of not to exceed 3%. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. We'd like to start a discussion on the performance increase percentage.
Are you looking for that tonight, Adam?
I think it would be helpful from the standpoint of, as we move into August and the budget, we will begin doing annual reviews based on this. So it's not necessarily required to do tonight because it has, there's still, you know, you got to figure out who would all be eligible for it, but from the perspective of establishing a number for employees to understand and us to possibly import into the budget, it would be helpful. I would probably be bringing it back in the next month easily to try to get an understanding of what that number would be if the council is, you know, desiring to offer a pay for performance in addition to the cost of living.
Because you're shooting in the dark in terms of the total dollars allocated. And I know historically, when this did come up, and I think there was a year or two that the council did it, it was a sum of money. It was a pot of money, and gave discretion to the department heads together with the city administrator to spend that merit pay. I don't know, I don't, I'm not following this percentage thing.
Well, at this point, I'm opening up for discussion on the plan.
It's cost of living 3% with pay for performance in addition to that. So if it gets a set, say it's set at 1%, an employee who is a top performer could be eligible for a 4% increase instead of a 3% increase. So that's.
But we don't know what that would amount to in real dollars.
Because we don't know who's also eligible.
Exactly, exactly.
So we would have to look at it and, and say, okay, so say the top 25% get it, we could get those real dollars in front of you and say, well, this, this is what's in the budget as we present the budget. If that's not okay at that point, it shall be, increase for this shall be X a percentage. It doesn't, the maximum pay for performance. It could be less than that if we get into a situation in the budget where you can't afford.
So not to exceed.
Yeah, it's a maximum pay for.
I can live with that motion.
All right, so Ellen.
All right. The document that you sent out has in, in merit pay, a range. And, and so the range is, I'm wondering if you can explain how that range would fit into a hypothetical not to exceed percentage.
The range of the merit-based pay increase?
Correct.
So, so basically, if there was a high-performing employee, their cost of living increase would be under this tonight, 3%.
Correct.
Okay? If the, say there's an additional 1% that's offered there, we would look at it and say the maximum that individual could get is 4% for the year instead of 3.
And then you're suggesting that falls within the range that you've suggested in the proposed document?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, I would say that, I think I sent in the email a recommendation of a percentage and a half, so one and a half percent.
Okay.
Addition to. So the highest performers could be eligible for up to 3% with a one and a half addition to that. So that could be 1%, it could be 0.75%.
Okay, so for clarification for the council as well as anyone listening, the range that you have would be entry level, I'm assuming it's entry level on the left side, and then the range would be the top amount that anyone in that position could.
You're correct.
So I just want the council to understand that you can talk about a percentage not to exceed, but then you're also looking at that pay range for each position. So there is a percentage, but there's also, that's, the pay range is within that percentage.
Generally speaking, if somebody cannot get a cost of living and a pay for performance to exceed the maximum range number for their position.
Correct.
We never, it caps out.
Right. But I want people to be clear about that. So I'm hoping that helps people.
So the numbers you put in here cap out, even if the 3% takes you over, you don't get it. Is that what you're saying?
The annually, the matrix, the wage matrix here increases with the cost of living. So every year, there's a 3% adjustment in, or the cost of living adjustment.
On the high end. So it goes.
On the whole thing.
Okay.
Okay? So, so it moves with the cost of living.
Got it.
So everybody sort of moves in the range equitably. It's then those high performers that could get higher increases, they're still within the range.
So hypothetically speaking, someone comes in at the average point as a new hire, they're an excellent performer, they get hypothetically a cost of living plus one and a half, 2%, whatever the max might be. They might hit up against that maximum pay range pretty quickly. The suggestion for someone that does that is possibly move up in the organization to a higher level position. So there's always room to grow.
But they would always be eligible for the cost of living.
Terry.
I was just going to make the comment that I, basically, at my job that I'm at right now, we were eligible for a 3% cost of living incentive pay. I capped out at 2.9 because I had maxed out in my pay scale, and I believe that's what you're trying to.
There's a pay scale and a max for everything. There's a max that they cannot exceed.
So my pay, I didn't get the full 3% because I capped out at 2.9.
In this proposal, an employee would not cap out because the whole scale moves up 3%. So the only thing that would push you up against the max.
Could be merit.
Is your performance pay.
Okay.
My, my company has something similar in a way, but when you come up against that max, understanding the 3% rises with you, right? If you're at that max, if your 3% rises, then whatever, percentage and a half, we pay that out as a lump sum. Is that something we could look into doing here?
Well, we certainly could.
No, it's not in this, but I'm saying going forward.
Yeah, we certainly could. I mean, we've avoided, you know, those types of, those types of arrangements in that particular case because they're already at the very, you know, that's the top end. They're paid, you know, from an entry level low, that's a 30% increase from an entry level. So that's a pretty significant, you know, you add the more to that. Obviously, something we could look at, you know, there are going to be certain situations, you know, I don't think many of our, many, frankly, nobody's really close to the max at this point. Most of the individuals are in the, between the low and control. The goal would be keep everybody around the control point at the very highest and only, you know, likely during negotiations and trying to get somebody we really, really want, does the, the max even become even, you know, a possibility? So, you know, we want to start people off and give them light at the end of the tunnel to make more, and if you start making too much, obviously, there's going to be a cap or a ceiling. So it's something we can certainly talk about, but it was not brought forward because we're already paying what would be a pretty large difference or premium for that at the top end.
Any further discussion?
You want a motion, don't you?
Well, it's up to you all. I, you know.
We want to discuss percentages at this meeting, or come back at the next meeting with a motion with numbers?
When are you starting the budget?
It started.
Okay. I, I moved, no, you're going to have to help me word this. I moved that within the Ripon Pay Plan and Program that the raises not to exceed 2%.
Performance-based.
Performance-based raises, not to exceed 2%, which means we can always go lower, but we can't go higher.
A second then. I was going to say two.
Two?
It was going to be one and a half.
I was thinking that.
I was one and a half.
Discussion on the motion.
Yeah. I just felt one and a half was.
I just felt one and a half was a fair number. It gives the department heads and the city administrator room to work things in and stay within our proposed budget and caps for the positions. Two might be a little.
However, it's also within the administrator and department heads for you not exceed the one and a half.
True.
But you do build an expectation. You build an expectation with a percentage. I did great, where's my two percent? That's my concern with a percent. I mean, if you have all the money in the world, yeah, but we don't have unlimited budget here, that's my concern with a percentage. And so whether you back it down to a percent and a half or, I just, if, if, if the word is out, if I'm a high performer, I'm supposed to get an additional two percent, where's my two percent?
Up to the one and a half.
You think it's up to.
That's what I say, up to, but then why am I not getting it?
Well, don't you think that's up to the administrator and his staff to, to inform employees accordingly as to policy? I mean, that hasn't been done here before.
That's what I'm saying. What you're doing this evening has not been done.
Right, but what Adam is trying to do is, we're having a culture change here, which has been occurring for the last two years, and part of that is actually talking to your department heads and having a certain expectation of performance from them in having their employees understand what goes on. And I think that we have good staff and they can be trained to understand the pay-for-performance system and then relay that information to their employees. I'm not saying we're going up to two percent, and I think department heads can also say, we, that doesn't mean an automatic two percent. It means that is what is a pool of money that is available, because that's really what we're doing, is it's a pool of money.
Right, I agree with that, and that's where I'm troubled by this, because if you take two percent and your entire staff are high performers.
But they're not going to be.
Why not? We hope they are.
We want them to.
We want them to, absolutely.
Are there going to be a curve?
Yes.
Created on a curve?
Yes, yeah.
The chair said in previous discussion that he hopes that 25% of the staff performs at a level that they merit either the full or partial increase. Administrator and the department heads control the budget, and they know that they have to be constrained sometimes. We have to put it in their, we have to trust them to.
Do their job.
Do their job properly.
And what I'll just add to this conversation is the two percent is important from the standpoint, if you're a high performer and you're making less, right? Because, because that's, that's a two percent for someone making more in the range is a greater number. So, so by, by having a range saying up to two percent, somebody who may be a high performer but maybe making three or four dollars per hour more, make it a four percent. It allows for those high performers who may be, you know, newer to our organization to achieve that additional two percent, right? To, to, to catch them up, you know, you know, because in the past, the only way, you know, tenure was pretty much just rewarded is the only reason we were giving people a raise, is just you've been here another year, right? So this allows up to that, you know, say one and a half, two percent, we're going to look at that pay scale and that pay, that pay range, and if somebody's, you know, making $20 an hour, and somebody's making $24 an hour, but they're both high performers, that person making 20 may get a higher percentage because it, it, it equates to probably equal the raise in terms of dollars and cents for someone making one percent increase. So it's just looking through the entire, the entire performance evaluation process and identifying those in that process that would be most eligible for up to that amount, and then looking through it deeper and saying, you know, here they are on the scale, although they did great, this person's lower on the scale and they've done, you know, a great job as well, they get the maximum amount versus someone getting less than that. So that's what I would comment on, on why there's a range as well, because sometimes that, that may, that number may be very much more impactful for someone who is, is just coming into the organization or are lower paid.
So on a case-by-case basis, evaluated annually.
For every employee.
For every employee. Up to but not to exceed.
Yep.
Is the motion. So this case-by-case thing needs to be in the motion.
Yep.
Because this two percent is too generic.
It's in the policy, isn't it?
I don't know if it's in the policy.
It just says eligibility and it doesn't say case-by-case per se, but it says establishing fairness and parameters, so.
Case-by-case is implied.
Yes.
Well, we, we can change the motion to include the verbiage case-by-case because that's certainly the intent.
In consultation with.
It's not, it's not a general, everybody gets this.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and I think the, the one thing I wanted to add was, again, we're, we're changing a culture for the workforce, and it's not only about the, the recruitment that Adam has talked about, it's also about retaining good employees. And, and the private sector pays better than the public sector, and, and we're in competition for good workers, so we need to be able to compensate them fairly. So I, I don't know what the, I can't even remember what the motion was.
Naomi, could you read back the original motion?
No short-term, no short-term memory.
You made a motion within the Rip and Pay Plan Program, the performance-based raises, and I added case-by-case.
Okay.
Not to exceed two percent.
Correct.
On a case-by-case in consultation with the department head and the city administrator. Both components should be involved.
Any more words you want to add?
No, those, those are necessary. Otherwise, it's.
The city administrator and the department head.
That's pretty much written in the policy.
Yep, that's why I want the motion to be that, so it fits with the policy. Who seconded the motion?
Johnson.
Now, we're just going to.
Honestly, coming from somebody in, in the private sector that's worked in private sector for a long time, I actually find this like far more equitable and transparent than I've ever had, so I would, my company's watching.
But they're not a public company, that's the problem. They're not publicly held.
While I disagree with the concept of a friendly amendment, I will allow at this point, you and you agree to the amendment to the current wording, then we will proceed on that. Any further discussion on the motion? Naomi, if you could read the motion one more time.
Okay, so motions was Rip and Pay Plan Program, the performance-based raises on a case-by-case in consultation with the city administration and department head basis, not to exceed two percent.
Very good. If there is no more discussion?
Can we do a roll call vote?
Yep, we can do the roll call vote, please.
Iverson.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gallops.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Datsky.
Yes.
Thorson.
Yes.
Split.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on, resolution for 2022 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for this DNR.
So every year, we submit our CMAR report to the DNR, they review it, and then they request that the common council approve the annual compliance maintenance annual report via resolution, so it just acknowledges the performance of the wastewater treatment plant, so you can kind of see the report, and toward the very end, you will see an overall sort of GPA. Grade inflation is not evident in this GPA, but overall, there was one section for financial management that we received an F. Other than that, there was As across the board, so final GPA of 3.89. So that's, you know, basically, a, a not an action range or a recommendation range, so there's no response required. We just review the CMAR, approve it, and it all gets submitted to the DNR notifying them that the council has reviewed and approved. It just kind of goes over some technical stuff about how the plant performs, certainly can try to answer it, and we should hopefully do better this next year with financial management.
I assume part of the financial management issue is pre-rate change.
Correct.
And, and that's the F.
Yeah.
Yeah, question. How much is, how much do we normally have in a replacement fund now? It says in here that we should have like $331,000.
I would have to look into what we actually have at this point. I think our audit will tell us that coming up, so I don't have that information.
We don't have anything close to that.
I would say with the rate increase, we're probably doing healthier than that. Certainly, we were not necessarily losing money per se, but we should be better than that, and a lot of it depends on how much we're spending on capital for the year as well, but overall, the rate increase should put us on a better path to achieve that, that number. We do have cash and we do have a replacement fund, and there are requirements that we have to put in, so we meet those requirements from a, a bonding and/or DNR perspective. I don't have the number off the top of my head, I can certainly have Amanda pull that and get it to you.
Okay. Do, do you believe that next year when we have to do this, we'll have a better grade for the financial part?
What's that?
Do you think next year when we do this, we'll have a better grade for the financial part, hopefully?
It'll, we'll have to look at the audit, you know, and, and see what it all says, but, you know, when you increase rates by 50% and it's saying that you're short and you have to increase rates and you've done it, hopefully that it results into a better grade than an F.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
I'll second it.
And moved by David, seconded by Doug. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor approving the resolution for the 2022 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved. All right, next item is an ordinance to amend Title 23 Lighting, Landscaping and Buffer Yard Regulations of Section 23.02.010. This is an undue hardship waiver for the, for lack of a better term, landscaping ordinance for the City of Ripon. The Plan Commission reviewed this and agreed with its wording and recommends approval. Questions, discussion, motions?
I'll move that we amend Title 23 Lighting Landscape and Buffer Regulations, Section
I'll second.
Moved by Alan, seconded by John. Discussion?
What exactly was changed in this?
Basically, current situation is if someone has, is seeking a variance to the landscape ordinance, they go to, I believe the order is Plan Commission, then back to zoning appeals, and back to Plan Commission. This allows them to do it all in one step at Plan Commission with a two-thirds vote.
Okay.
So it's adding the whole section, so every word you're reading.
Okay, this was a distance ask.
This is all, this is all new to give the Plan Commission some flexibility with what, you know, I think we've learned is an important ordinance regarding lighting, landscaping, and buffer yard regulations. However, there are some specific, particular situations that it doesn't make sense, and we've come across a couple of those at the Plan Commission level, so rather than make them go through a variance process, give the Plan Commission some flexibility.
Okay.
To grant a waiver.
And one key part of this wording is it cannot be strictly a financial hardship, just because you don't want to pay to do the job. You have to have a better reason than that.
I want plant the plants.
So the, I'll just give you the, the real-life example that the Plan Commission dealt with that kind of kicked this off. There's a food producer that was required to meet, it was doing an addition that would have been required to meet landscaping ordinance requirements, but because of safe quality foods and production regulations, planting trees and bushes and things around this would have been a, an area for, you know, rabbits and mice and other things to get close to their building, and that is frowned upon. So, so they received a variance, had to go back and forth, and that sort of set off this, but that's, that's a real-life example of what happened and why this is in front of you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, crib, roll call, please.
Iverson.
Yes.
Hanson.
Aye.
Gallops.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Datsky.
Yes.
Thorson.
Yes.
Split.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Down to our last item. Tonight is discussion on a community development authority.
Adam? I presented a little slideshow here, and I'll just go over this, so really. So we're here to talk a little bit about a community development authority. So ahead of the meeting, I had shared with you, so the state statute as well as a, kind of an older paper on a community development authority. So overview of what we'll talk about, just history, state statute reasons, or creating draft ordinance, financial support, and the next steps. The idea is not here tonight to act on any ordinance, it's purely kind of a discussion and, and answering any questions, because this is a bit of a different way of doing some things than we're used to. So, so in the, in the packet of information and some of the stuff I provided you, the City of Ripon did have an Act of CDA, and they met until 2013, so it's been approximately 10 years. In my review of it, talking to people, I do not believe that it was created via ordinance and it had limited authority and powers. They were not given full statutory authority to do certain things like borrow or to loan funds or to really be a true and effective community development authority. In addition to this, there has been, you know, other agencies or efforts to promote economic development in the city, so there's been the RCDC, I believe it was called, and that's discontinued, and there are other agencies and efforts, you know, there's to be Fond du Lac County, that's now like Envision, that had a role. I'm certainly, you know, I'm sure I've missed something or someone doing something along sometime, but I wasn't here, so all we're kind of looking at is what we want to do moving forward with this concept. So essentially, common councils are able to establish a community development authority under 66.1335 via a two-thirds vote. And the statute kind of gives over general, a general overview of what the community development authority would be responsible for. But generally speaking, it's to carry out blight elimination, slum clearance, urban renewal programs and projects, housing projects, sorry, and housing projects. So, and then it authorized the authority to act as agent of the city in planning and carrying out community development programs and activities approved by the mayor and common council under the Federal Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. So I believe that's sort of kind of one of the key components that, that wasn't necessarily done in the past. There wasn't a full authorization by the common council to give the full authority of the CDA to do this, so. So you have an ordinance, obviously, by a two-thirds vote, you could create a community development authority. And it has further information in the state statutes of what it can do or what it's responsible for. But generally speaking, you know, in a nutshell, it is the blight elimination, slum clearance, urban renewal programs, et cetera. So there are varying reasons of why you should create a CDA. As you saw in some of the information, they are very common across the state. Most every community of our size has something or has a community development authority acting in the community to promote economic development. So really, the CDAs are special entities that promote community development and undertake projects that contribute to the growth and enhancement of neighborhoods and local economies. They can work in urban revitalization and looking at blighted properties and undeveloped areas to assist with redeveloping them. They can attract new businesses and residents and investment in the community. They can deal with affordable housing issues. Part of the statute is if you have a housing authority, which some communities have housing authority, the CDA becomes the housing authority. That would not be the case in our community. We do not have a housing authority. The concept there is that some communities have, I believe, Section 8 or subsidized housing that they own as the community. They have a housing authority. When you create a community development authority, they overtake that. But beyond that, they can work on housing programs and housing development. They can obviously hit economic development and support projects, stimulate job growth. They can work with projects to invest in infrastructure improvements. And although kind of more of a case-by-case basis, they can work to, like it says here, deal with roads and utilities and things of that nature. In addition to that, the CDAs are a committee of seven individuals, including two common council members. And so it sort of separates the common council and removes some of the politics out of development, which can certainly cause problems at times. But overall, it's a seven-person board. The goal would be to put two council members and then five individuals who understand economic development from banking, legal, you know, real estate, so on and so forth, on the board to assist with development projects and running the committee. There's funding flexibilities. They can access various funding sources, including grants and loans, and, you know, leverage public-private partnerships, which is the next one, to promote investment and undertake projects that, you know, frankly, the city otherwise would be, it would be complicated to do. So the example I will provide here is, you know, as the city tries and accomplishes some pretty big projects, such as the Public Works Garage, and some of our ability to, say, borrow or do things may be limited by those projects, economic development cannot stop, and we have to open up opportunities to continue to grow. And the example I will use, in my former community, they had a CDA. The city was at a borrowing position, and they wanted to bring in a hotel. And they used the CDA to borrow and issue a note with a TIF district to essentially land a hotel. The city couldn't have done it without the CDA at that time because of the borrowing that it had done to create the TIF district. So overall, it does provide some funding flexibility. And oftentimes, next point, you can sort of sometimes create public-private partnerships, leveraging things. The biggest one there would be, you know, with our local lending institutions to say, if you have an opportunity to do a business loan and somebody has to find gap financing or somebody needs, you know, needs to find a place or a space or needs to find X amount of dollars to make a project go, the CDA can be a tool that is used to, you know, support that lending institution's primary loan. You have brownfield redevelopment they can do, which certainly taking over sites that are contaminated, which we have a few. And then long-term planning, they can look at, you know, providing opinions and input on economic development. And then also acquiring and rehabbing, you know, stabilizing neighborhoods by acquiring and rehabbing housing structures to remove blight. So, you know, there are many benefits, but certainly it comes down to whether, you know, it's being run right, being done right, governed right, the right community involvement is there, and securing certain funding and other things, partnerships. So each community is different. You know, we had one, we don't have one anymore. And then you can see the link here to the working paper, which had, I don't know how many listed communities that had CDAs, but I would guess that the majority of cities and villages in the state at this point that are doing economic development have some level of CDA. One of the reasons why we're talking about this, again, I had a meeting with our Chamber Director and our Main Street Director. You know, in the past with economic development, the city offered a CDBG Economic Development Loan. That program is discontinued. That was refunded and went to fund the Senior Activity Center. So the city currently, outside of TIF district, does not have a loan program for economic development, does not have the ability to assist. We are coming off of a time where pandemic relief money and funding is over. The state came through with, say, their $10,000 vacant building grant that they gave $10,000 to multiple businesses. The DOA was in town here celebrating that. That is gone. Certainly, we have active TIF districts, but not every area is covered by a TIF district. And not every TIF district can perform in a way to land development or get a property or program off the ground. There are other programs available in the community with some limited success, including Envision Greater Fond du Lac County Fund, where they offer loans. Chamber and Main Street have grant dollars for, you know, facade improvement, but we're talking very limited in terms of dollars. So there's no startup grant, there's no loan fund. And frankly, there's really no strategy in, at this point, that we are really executing with economic development in a really strong way outside of our TIF districts. And so those are the reasons why. I mean, the past, we have been probably more helpful than the present in terms of, you know, loans and grants and things of that nature. So the CDA with appropriate resources could sort of fill that gap. Concerns, obviously, just off the top of my head. You know, there's limited funding sources, and we need to be impactful. So there will be, need to be some sort of financial commitment made to establish a CDA that can actually do some of the things listed above or replace some of those things. There's always the concern of those that didn't. You know, you're starting this now, I didn't get dollars, and now you're going to give this person dollars to do something. But certainly, you know, what we've seen in small businesses and some of the closures recently, you know, or some of the struggles, there are ways to better position businesses to make it pass the first couple of years and sustain itself better that are not being implemented now. And there are certainly ways to have retention programs as well. So another concern is just a broader focus. I think a lot of times we get tunnel vision on, say, the downtown area. And we'll have to have a broader focus here. It's going to be, you know, it's very easy to get tunnel vision on that, but there are certainly other areas in the community or other projects that a CDA could review and undertake. You know, some of them we can't start fast enough, but we have to balance that out. The ordinance is pretty simple. There's a draft. It establishes the CDA. You know, with LUG's review and final blessing, this would be what would be considered to establish by a two-thirds vote a CDA. And then financial support, overall, we'd be looking at how do we fund something? Certainly, we have a Fond du Lac County sales tax allocation. We have the affordable housing extension funds that we continue to close TIF districts and have dollars laying aside that we could funnel to the CDA. We have room tax allocation. There are dollars that we're putting into room tax that are not being used to promote economic development in meaningful ways. We can reallocate those to a CDA. There are loan pass-throughs. For example, like I described in the former community I was at, they basically established a loan fund through a TIF district and repayment of that, you know, to establish, to pass through a lower percentage rate on a loan. You can sort of provide gap financing and be sort of a pass-through. Certainly, you can couple things with TIF districts. So you can leverage TIF increment with other repayment schedules to get projects done. A lot of communities take on land and property under ownership of the CDA, and when they sell it, they take the proceeds and put it into loan funds or other projects. So the idea is making money to establish a pool of money. And then you can look at other grants and funds, you know, at a state or at a, you know, local or federal level to fund projects. Overall, you know, next step would be considering an ordinance at an upcoming council meeting. Appoint a CDA. So you'd have to find five public members and two council members. Allocate resources, if any, in the budget. Create programs, including loans and incentive packages that we could promote economic development. And then establish partnerships and, you know, with financial institutions and our local economic development agencies. So having this be a tool in the toolbox for economic development to partner with, say, Envision or the Chamber or whatever other programs that may be out there. And then, you know, also identifying redevelopment projects in the community or properties that may be needing redevelopment or have been complighted or frankly are, you know, need some attention. So it's a lot of information and a lot to consider, but that is all I have with it. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, how often are they planning a meeting? Is that going to be up to the CDA? One month?
Yeah, I think it depends on, it depends on, obviously, you know, the way it was being done before didn't work. And they were meeting, I believe, four times a year, depending on, you know, the overall agenda items. And you see toward the end of it, you know, the vision for the community development authority. So they were having a bit of an identity crisis 10 years ago. So I think as you start off, you want to meet and you want to begin talking with, you know, Chamber, Main Street, you know, other economic development agencies to, you know, whatever resource you provided, find the program and develop the right program to roll out. You don't want to just create it to meet, to do nothing, right?
Right.
There are projects, right off the top of my head, right down here, 126 Jefferson, ablated, you know, abandoned, city-owned property, that they could take the lead on the rest of the project, right? By tearing it down or redeveloping it. There are things they could get involved in, you know, immediately, you know, but we would look at establishing a couple grant programs, strategic ones, you know, for, you know, small business, gap financing, whatever it may be. So it's, you know, we'd sort of have that conversation and try to get, you know, more strategic about what we want to promote to begin with. And then, you know, with resources comes programs and projects. So, you know, I would, I don't obviously want another meeting. I think, you know, that's never fun. I don't want long, long, long meetings and, you know, but I'd say for the first couple of months, it'd probably be monthly, and then, you know, as needed, you know, when there's a project or a program needing to be taken care of. So.
Do we have anybody in mind in the community?
I have not even, we haven't even gotten that far to talk about that. But, you know, anybody, generally speaking, in the legal, banking, real estate, business owner realm is what you're really, you know, looking for. Somebody who knows how to look at a loan or a application and say, yep, this makes sense and, you know, provide X amount of, you know, analysis, right? So it just can't be, it's got to be somebody with general knowledge.
Okay. How much, what do you think, what would you anticipate the amount of money would be going into this CDA?
Depending on the affordable housing funds, you could be talking north of $150,000.
Okay.
To start.
Okay. But it would depend on the project and what, where the funds could come from.
Yeah, so, but we have existing dollars, right? We have affordable, TIF affordable housing funds that are sitting there yet to be used.
Right.
And unless we keep doing, you know, home remodel projects, there are other things that it can be done to use. I've thought about different programs, I'm not going to get into it, but how you could use the CDA to use those funds to promote, you know, redevelopment of properties for housing purposes as well. So not just purely, you know, your commercial business or industrial business, but, you know, housing as well. So.
All right, thank you, Adam.
You're welcome.
Further questions or discussion for this evening? Certainly gives you something to think about. If there's nothing else, we'll move on. Project updates and staff reports. BD? Naomi?
Adam?
So a few things we're working on. Obviously, we have some of our projects starting. So State Street started this morning. There was pre-con last week. We got some information out today, so that will move along. And then the trail project will begin here in early August. Still working on permitting and some information for Tigard Street Bridge, but that is a more fall project. We have issued a request for proposals for recycling contract for the city for 2024. Our current contract with Waste Management expires at the end of this year. So we will be accepting proposals into August and have that prepared with recommendations at the second meeting in August. The associate appraisal contract is expiring, so we will be reviewing the appraisal contract with them. Seward Street, you saw maybe today, has closed. So Ripon College has started their Science Center building project here in the next week or so. So expect that to be closed for about a year as they finish that project and start it. And then we have discussions with the police union regarding an MOU for recruitment and retention. So we're working through that. We will have to have a, likely a union negotiating team meeting with them here in the next couple of weeks. And then we are doing interviews for senior center director position and hope to have a finalist identified by the end of the week. We had what I would consider significant interest in that position.
Thank you, Adam. All right. I do have one appointment for this evening. This is for Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending 10/31/2024. It's filling a vacancy. I recommend Ron Silber for the seat, and I'd like to apologize to Ron for the delayed appointment. Some time for decision-making and just the fact that I missed the last meeting deadline for the appointment. Would anyone care to make a motion to appoint Ron Silber?
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
And moved by John, seconded by Ellen. Sorry, Doug. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Ron Silber to the Historic Preservation Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you very much. Any future agenda items or comments from council? Any future agenda items or comments from council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Moved by Doug, seconded by David. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We are adjourned.